Becky, would you like me to admit those in the waiting room?
Oh, you couldn't hear me? Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks.
Order at 6:57 PM. This night, this evening, we have one item on the agenda, which is presentation of Capital Drive pedestrian analysis. We have with us the members of the Open Spaces Committee, and Elder Services Board. Am I correct on that? Yes. Who were invited to ask to join us for collaborative meetings to avoid the meeting-to-meeting presentation. Keeping in mind that the purpose of this meeting is to review the engineering study that's required for several of the requests that were made. The study will has been submitted to DOT, right? So it and we have no control over how long that their review and response takes. And we are not able to change the engineering study that was submitted. But we should have enough time tonight, even with our late start, to record any comments from the committee members. But there won't be those won't impact what DOT responds is reviewing at this time. So I just wanted to set parameters so that everybody knows what we can and cannot achieve this evening. So with that, I will hand it over to our friends from Strand Associates. And I just want to say it was a very informative study, and I don't say that jokingly, because I learned a lot. Appreciate it. It will, we just need you to speak actually directly into the microphone. Oh, yeah, and really loud.
I'm Adam Walter. I work at Strand Associates. I'm a professional traffic operation engineer. And I'm going over Capital Drive, pedestrian crossing evaluation and speed study. Probably gonna need some help clicking through the.
Yeah, are you, are you, can you tap it? Okay.
You gotta be right in.
Got it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
It needs to echo.
That's much better.
All right, so the agenda today, we'll talk about the purpose of the project, the project overview, existing facilities, data collection, crash analysis, speed analysis, pedestrian crossing walk evaluation, and then any questions. Click. Okay, so the purpose. This study is in response to a resident group request and includes items requiring an engineering evaluation for WISDOT approval and implementation. The study was approved by the village board in October 2023, and below are the items in the resident group request. So Capital Drive is state highway 190. It's a connecting highway, so that means it's maintained by the municipality, the village. But any major projects are majority funded by WISDOT. Also, WISDOT compensates the municipality for the additional traffic, state highway traffic that the municipality needs to maintain. So since this is a state connecting highway, you need to follow the state standards and guidelines, which I'll get into some of those on the next slide. But whoops, back to this one here, yep. But in respect to the resident group request, the, these are the requested items. The items in green are items that the village can address without WISDOT approval. So that's items one through five and 11. That's items such as trimming trees, pavement marking, signage. Items that require an engineering evaluation are items six through nine and 12 through 13. So those would be reducing speeds, eliminating crosswalks, physical barriers. And then item 10 does not meet the state statute, and I'll get into that one later in the presentation. All right. So WISDOT has guidelines and standards that need to be followed for a speed study and for crosswalk closures. The manual for speed studies is the WISDOT Traffic Engineering, Operation, and Safety Manual, TOPS. Chapter 13, Section 5 talks about traffic regulation, speed limits. And the evaluation criteria within that manual is measurement and evaluation of speed characteristics, evaluation of crash history over the past five years, assessment of roadway geometrics, density and access, consideration of pedestrian, bicycle, and parking facilities, and current law enforcement level. And for the crosswalk evaluation, the manuals are the WISDOT's Facility Development Manual, the FDM. Section 11-46 covers bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, also the Wisconsin State Statute. And then the evaluation criteria mainly here is site conditions and safety concerns. So hopefully, these first two slides give you a little framework on why this analysis was completed. Gives you an idea of what will be going over on the next few slides. And why we're referencing these WISDOT manuals. So the project overview. This study reviewed the existing facilities, crash history, and speed data on the corridor to evaluate crosswalk closures, speed limits, and other potential improvements. The image below shows the project corridor. It's approximately 0.3 miles on Capital Drive. It starts west of Woodburn Street and it sends through the Bartlett Avenue intersection. The existing facilities, so this is classified as a connecting highway, as I mentioned before. It's also a principal arterial. So functionality-wise, principal arterials, their main function is mobility. And then you have minor arterials, major collectors, minor collectors, and then local streets where locals streets are geared more towards access, principal arterials more towards our mobility. So the typical section on this roadway, 11-foot through lanes, 10-foot turn lanes, 11-foot combined parking and bike lanes for westbound traffic, and a four-foot bike lane for eastbound traffic. And the image on the right shows a typical section of the roadway looking east. So access control. There's a median that consists of red bravers that was shown on the previous slide in the median. Also vegetation and small trees within some of the median. There's full access at Capital and Morris, Larkin and New Hall, and then partial access at Bartlett and Woodburn. So with this being a principal arterial, this is kind of the functionality of the roadway that you would expect. You don't have access to every driveway, but you do have full access at a few of the intersections and then partial access at some of the intersections as well. So the existing facility, pedestrian facilities, pedestrian generators in the area are Shorewood High School, the post office, businesses and residents, and the Oakleaf Trail west of the corridor limits. Pedestrian crosswalks, there are continental-style pavement markings at all of the crosswalks crossing Capital Drive. And there's crossings on the east and west side of the intersections for all the crossings except Bartlett Avenue. Pedestrian signs. There's pedestrian and school crossing signs at New Hall, Morris, and Bartlett. And at Woodburn and Larkin do not have pedestrian crossing signs. I believe Larkin now does have those. I don't believe Woodburn does.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I think there might be somebody on the virtual platform that isn't muted. Okay, and Trusty Stockburn, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't see the middle school as a pedestrian generator. That's a lot of kids.
Okay, yeah.
Intermediate school is at Morris.
Yeah, we, yeah, we do have that in the report, and I'll get to the, some of the data that with the, with how many pedestrians and bicycles there are on this corridor specifically.
Yeah, and I might, I forgot to say this at the, at the beginning. If people could hold their question, make note of your questions as the, and then when we get to the end, we can jump back.
Perfect. And also, there's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at New Hall Street. And that picture below showed at the beginning of the study, there's now post-mounted on each side as well. So the existing facilities, some site issues that were identified during the observations. This is the median refuge at Capital and Bartlett, and you can see the vegetation obstructing the view of the pedestrian in the, in the median refuge island. Also, this is the westbound left turn lane at Capital Drive and the, into the Culvers driveway. You can see a tree and vegetation potentially obstructing the view of the, of the turning vehicle. You can see it kind of has to poke its nose out a bit to see oncoming traffic. Okay, so on to data collection. We performed eight-hour turning movement counts during the AM midday and PM peaks. They capture the time of day with the highest pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And this table here, it has a lot of numbers, but the main takeaway is that there are a lot of bicyclists and a lot of pedestrians on this corridor. The crash analysis, segment crash rates are calculated by the number of crashes per 100 million vehicle miles traveled. And these are compared to statewide averages for similar roadways. Also, the upper control limits are another way to compare crash rates. There were 42 crashes on this corridor over the five-year study period from 2018 to 2022. And one thing to note is intersection crashes are included in segment totals. So if there's a lot of signalized intersections on a segment, it can kind of skew those totals higher. So there's one signalized intersection in this segment at Morris, and there's 11 of the 42 crashes occurred there. So with those crashes included, it's 1.3 times the statewide average. If those crashes were excluded, it would be slightly below the statewide average. There were no fatalities, two A severity injuries and five B severity injuries on the corridor. A severity injuries are suspected serious injury, so that would be broken bones, major laceration with bleeding. Type B severity would be minor injuries, so you know, maybe a minor laceration, bruises. And then there's type C injuries too, which are possible injuries, which you might have some pain, but no apparent bruising or wounds. Following, the pie chart on the right shows crash types. The most common crashes were rear ends, followed by swipes, sideswipes, and angle crashes. And that's kind of what you would expect with a lot of the signage, pavement markings, you know, you get a lot going on in the corridor typically leads to, you know, more rear-end crashes. Intersection crashes, the four intersections we evaluated were Capital Drive intersections with Bartlett, New Hall, Larkin, and Woodburn. At Bartlett and New Hall, there were four crashes over the five-year study period. And at Larkin and Woodburn, there was one crash at each intersection over the five-year period. So not any big intersection crash trends at these unsignalized intersections. Pedestrian crashes, there were four pedestrian crashes over the five-year study period. Two at the Capital Drive and Culvers driveway, one at Bartlett Avenue, and one at Morris Boulevard. There were three bicycle crashes, one at Bartlett Avenue, one at Culvers, the Culvers driveway, and one at the Morris Boulevard intersection. So the speed analysis. We collected four hour speed data was collected at three sites during non-peak traffic conditions on a Tuesday and Wednesday to collect data when motorists are most likely to be traveling at uninterrupted speeds. Site two, speed data was omitted because of the proximity to the Wilson Drive and Morris Boulevard signalized intersection. So a lot of the startup and slowdown from the signalized intersection caused interrupted speeds, so a lot lower speeds there. And this kind of gives you a picture, you know, site one is west of the corridor, so it gives you a good idea of what speeds are entering and leaving the corridor. And then site three is, you know, squarely within the corridor. So that is a good idea of what speeds are within the corridor. So I'm gonna go over some terminology here that for the speed analysis, this is how WISDOT evaluates some of the speed criteria. The TOPS, Chapter 13, Section 5 defines the statutory authority and approval process of speed limits. The 85th percentile speed is the speed at or below which 85th percent of the free-flowing vehicles are traffic, or are traveling. And according to TOPS, motorists are generally capable of determining the driving speed that is reasonable for prevailing road and traffic conditions. 85th percentile speed has been found to best represent this perceived reasonable speed, and the posted speed should be within five miles an hour of the 85th percentile speed. Also, from TOPS, using this approach reduces risk of being involved in a crash and promotes voluntary speed compliance. Another term that's analyzed in the speed analysis is the 10 mile an hour pace. The 10 mile an hour band of travel speeds at which the largest number of vehicles are traveling on a particular stretch of roadway. And a typical distribution for this is about 70% of the observed vehicles within a 10 mile an hour pace, and the 85th percentile speed is generally near or at the top of that. So the images on, the image in the bottom right shows that 10 mile an hour place in the black bar chart. And then the red dot is the 85th percentile speed, and the yellow line is the posted speed limit. So the existing posted speed limit of 30 miles an hour falls within the 10 mile an hour pace. You know, it's kind of right at the edge or close to the bottom for both of them. And then the 85th percentile speed was not within five miles of the posted speed, of it was within 10 of the posted speed. So the 85th percentile speed and the 10 mile an hour pace suggest that speeds on Capital Drive are slightly higher than that TOPS recommended posted speed limit of within five miles an hour, 85th percentile speed being within five miles of the posted speed limit. So according to TOPS, unreasonably low speed limits are not effective in changing drive, driver behavior and have several negative effects. Research shows that drivers not reduce their speeds to the posted limit on the basis of signage alone. Some of the negative, some of the potential negative effects includes higher financial costs for increased enforcement, higher crash risks, and promotes a false sense of security among residents who may expect drivers to reduce their speeds based on the lower posted speed limits. So just lowering the speed limit by itself, according to TOPS, not an effective strategy. Traffic calming measures could be considered to reduce the speed. Traffic calming measures that are currently on the corridor include bump outs. So at a lot of your unsignalized intersections, there's bump outs, lane width reductions. Typically, a principal arterial will have 12-foot lanes. This has 11-foot through lanes and 10-foot turn lanes, medians and refuge islands, and then high-visibility pavement markings. So if you can go back one slide, you can see how these traffic calming measures impact the speed slightly. You know, site one, you have your 39 mile an hour 85th percentile speed. And at site three, you have your 36 mile an hour 85th percentile speed with your lower pace at all. So you can see that these traffic calming measures are slightly reducing speeds on the corridor. Next slide. And on to the pedestrian crosswalk evaluation. So this is from the WISDOT Facilities Development Manual, the FDM. It states that it's generally undesirable to close the crosswalk on one side and direct pedestrians to the other side of the side road before crossing the street. Since this requires a pedestrian to avoid using what was once a legal crosswalk, often pedestrians will not detour out of their way when they face an obvious crossing in front of them. And then observations during the traffic counts, we observe pedestrians crossing Capital Drive outside the crosswalk. During the eight-hour traffic count, 26 pedestrians were observed crossing the median opening between the eastbound left turn lane and what would be the west north-south pedestrian crossing at Capital Drive and Bartlett Avenue, and that's what's shown in the picture in the top right. So there's a couple state statues here. I'm not gonna read those, but I'm gonna kind of summarize it with this first bullet. If a pedestrian or bicycle crosses roadway within a marked or unmarked crosswalk, the vehicle must yield the right of way to the pedestrian and bicyclist. If a pedestrian or bicyclist crosses the roadway outside of the marked or unmarked crosswalk, the pedestrian and bicyclist must yield the right of way to the vehicle. So if crosswalks are removed, that would require the pedestrian to yield the right of way to the vehicles. So jaywalking is not a law in Wisconsin, so that's why that item 10 in that initial, or in the resident request that said pedestrians must use crosswalks isn't enforceable. And also, the existing crash history did not indicate crash trends at the unsignalized inters, involving unsignalized intersection pedestrians, crossings. And with that, you can open it up to questions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so as I said, there is, this is for information only. At this point, I am guessing that there are, I can think of three types of comments that we can hear this evening. Clarifying questions, like something in the report that a person doesn't understand and wants to understand more. Comments of praise, comments of criticism. And maybe there's another category. And I guess I would like to just move through the categories because this is the time of being heard. And so first, I'll ask for clarifying questions. Trusty Arndorfer?
I had two. One, could you, you alluded to the middle school upfront. Could you just speak to how that you viewed that as a pedestrian driver? And then also, could you speak to the times that you chose for monitoring, especially with regard to, you know, with the high school and how on the, on that stretch of capital and how that factored or didn't factor into considering the times chosen?
The times for what exactly?
Monitoring speeds.
Okay, so, so when this, when?
Yeah, what times a day, right.
Okay, so the times a day. I don't know if you still have that, times a day that the speed data was elected. Do you still have that presentation up? Well, that's okay.
Oh, sorry about that. I wanted to be prepared to call on people, but we can screen share again.
Yeah, so the time of day.
Would this be the chart saying 6 to 9, 11 to 1, 3 to 6?
Yes, yes. So those were based on the EOPS guidelines on when those were taken. So in the TOPS guidelines, a section here I can reference. This is from TOPS, Section 13, 5. When a speed study is performed, a standard operating procedure should be followed to ensure that the sample set of data collected represents vehicle traveling at uninterrupted free-flow speeds, and doing so in accurate representation of vehicle speeds. Then the speed zone study area will be depicted. The following outlines the recommended procedure that should be followed when performing a speed study. The speed study should be performed during non-peak traffic conditions on a typical weekday, usually Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, when motorists are likely to be traveling at uninterrupted speeds. Speed studies conducted during peak commute times, unique events, weekends, or holidays may unintentionally cap, capture more variable travel characteristics. These variable traffic conditions may impede vehicles from operating at their typical free-flow speeds due to congestion and platooning. In addition, the speed should be collected during daylight hours in favorable weather conditions. So that's why they were conducted during, you know, the Tuesday, Wednesday, off-peaks daytime hours.
Thank you.
And then this, this slide here kind of shows, you know, we collected the data that, with the middle school, you know, all the pedestrians that were included are included in this data here with the middle school.
Got that, thank you.
And I'll add that I asked the engineer, given that DOT standards, traffic standards are, you know, historically car-centric, if there are alternative standards that are more pedestrian or cyclist-centered or, you know, more modern, I guess. And the answer was that although there are some alternative standards that have been proposed, the, this particular traffic study required, because it's a DOT, it's a, yeah, DOT roadway.
Connecting highway.
State connecting highway, those DOT's traffic standards have to be applied to this engineering. So there may be disagreement about that, but that's just, it's, it's a non-negotiable. That's how it is for this study and this process.
Did you have anything else? Yeah, they're, they're included in the pedestrian.
Great. Okay, other clarifying questions?
So Morris wasn't one of the intersections evaluated for the crosswalk closure. Yeah, it's a signalized intersection, so it has a controlled crossing. So that one wasn't, wasn't evaluated.
Okay, Trusty Stockburn.
So in your report to the state, do you indicate that Capital Drive at this point in the village is a major crossing? Capital and Morris is a major crossing intersection for our, half of our immediate school? Because it wasn't in your list of, I just want to make sure the state knows it's not just a school in this corridor, it's also the intermediate school? Can you confirm that that's in your report that you submitted, or can we add an addendum or something that makes sure that that's?
It is in the report submitted to WISDOT. They, they don't have this presentation.
Okay. Are there other clarifying questions on the part of the board? Okay, clarifying questions in the audience? If there are clarifying questions, we're gonna need you to come to the microphone. So these are questions pertaining to the information presented in the report. And then just name an address as we start.
Okay, my name's. Oh, I. Hi, I'm Katie Now, 1020 East Glendale, and also here in part as a member of. in part as a member of the Elder Services Advisory Board. The clarifying question I had is, in looking at the speed data, 85%, you indicated the speed limit, but that is also a school speed limit zone. So is that accounted for in any way? Or how is that considered when you look at that analysis?
Yeah, so the, when we collected the speed data, it was taken during off peak times, not during pickup and drop off. So if lunch, it was, there was, it was included in that. So there may have been pedestrians or, you know, that modified speed limit, like you're saying. So that may have lowered the speed total slightly. But in this report, what we were evaluating based on the resident request was the 30 mile an hour lowered to 25 mile an hour. So that's when it was taken during those times. If we were evaluating the, the 20 mile an hour school zone speed limit, we would have taken that speed data during those times. Does that answer your question? Okay.
All right. Clarifying question? Okay, I will note that Mr. Pendleton did sign, submit some very detailed comments today, which, yes. Which I will recommend be attached to, and he was provided with a lot of explanation back. Lots of people were comment, copied on this. We will attach that record to the minutes of this meeting moving forward. And also it can be forwarded to the engineers. And if you want, it can be forwarded to the DOT as well. Mr. Pendleton, your question?
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Sandy Pendleton, 3529 North Frederick Avenue. I have two clarifying questions. Would you agree, Mr. Walter, that section five of TOPS at page eight does mention that the number of changes in speed limit along a given route should be minimized?
Don't have the whole TOPS memorized. Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. The number of changes in speed limit along a given route should be minimized. That that's a worthwhile goal when we are looking at what the speed limit should be in a particular corridor.
Are you saying that that's what's, what's stated in the manual?
Yes.
You're just confirming that that's what's stated?
Yes, but my follow-up question is, I didn't see in the report a mention that the speed limit on Capital Drive east of Oakland is 25 miles per hour. And I wanted to ask, doesn't that, shouldn't that fact have been, or would it have been appropriate to mention that fact in the report? And does that fact then support having a 25 miles per hour speed limit throughout the entire corridor of Capital in Shorewood?
Okay, yeah, good, good question. You know, I kind of took that site three as the, as the site leaving and entering the corridor because that had the most similar typical section to the corridor. That site three is a four lane divided roadway with a median and has the wider lanes. Where east of Oakland is a very different typical section where it's a two lane roadway. So comparing your speeds in that typical section, it is very different than the, the comparing the speeds in the section of this corridor.
That was the reasoning.
The other clarifying question is, if you, would you, would it be your, be your opinion or clarifying question is, would it be your opinion that the manual would prohibit you from considering or doing collecting speed data at school startup and release times?
Yeah, so I, I think I kind of answered that one before, you know, if the, if we were evaluating the speed limit during the school startups and pickup times, we would have collected the speed data then because that's the 20 mile an hour speed. But in this resident group request, we got the, to evaluate the 30 mile an hour speed limit. So that's why we didn't collect speed data during the school startup and, and drop, pick up and drop off times.
That leads to a result, a report that puts higher speed numbers to the DOT, correct?
Based on what was requested, based on the, the scope of the engineering study was based on the request that was submitted. So if the request had been different, then the scope might have been different.
Think the request was, we're worried about students and when students are going to and from school and that vehicles are traveling too fast.
I think if you feel that the, I would say to anyone in the, who's here tonight, if you feel that the scope of the study missed something, we can certainly submit that and, and support it with DOT. But I don't think we're in a position to, to decipher that this evening.
Thank you, President.
Okay. Okay, if there are no further clarifying questions, oh, yes.
Can you go back to the slide? There were, besides the speed, I believe there was, were four things that you mentioned that could possibly be sought. Bump outs, lessening the lane width, that making them smaller, the traffic lane widths, the median refuge islands, and there was a fourth item.
Yeah, so, so those are, you know, if you wanted to try and lower your speeds, you know, you could potentially implement-
Because apparently posting a lower speed limit is not good. It's not worthwhile, not, so these are the options you're recommending, right? Bump outs, making the traffic lane smaller, median refuge islands, and then there was a fourth item.
That's, that's what's already on the corridor. So those are traffic calming measures that are currently on the existing corridor. And that-
But we could increase them, right? I mean, we could add more.
No.
Well, that, what, also. Right. So it's simply to, again, advance a process of asking for changes that DOT does not allow. And so we're following the only, the only avenue forward is to submit the requests with an engineering study so that DOT can make a determination. But that said, yeah, so. Yeah, I'll leave it there. So, at this point, are there comments? Are there people who would like to be heard on comments that criticize the findings or the limitations or the scope of the engineering study? And given that it's not going to change, but we can hear those comments and they can be attached to the record and also be considered, you know, moving forward in, in some way, shape or form. So, Mr. McGovern? Yes. So and the reason why I framed it that way is because the engineering, they, they are following, I'm going to say it again, they're following DOT standards because that's what, it's a DOT road. And so there may be people that don't agree with that, but that's what they're following. If we have different ideas, we can hear those ideas.
Yep. And I'll be brief because I know you've got a meeting coming up, but I'm Matt McGovern. I'm at 4936 North Wildwood Avenue. And I'm also running for village trustee. One of the reasons I'm running is because I'd like to see more traffic calming in the village and a lot of people are telling me that they're in support of that when, when they hear that I'm running. So my, my only comments would be, one, just that there's a really great demand for safer streets all throughout the village and that people bring up Capital Drive to me constantly. And so I know that this particular study is very constrained based on what was requested, you know, particular requests that people made to lower the speed limit or do other things. But it just, it sort of reminds me of that quote from Henry Ford where he said, if I, if I would have asked people what they wanted, they would have said a faster horse. So I think, you know, a lot of people don't know all the options that might be out there, like, you know, you could maybe go down to two lanes and have bike lanes in either direction and that would really slow traffic down and make it safer. So I think it's good to get input from people on specific requests they have, but also keep in mind that, you know, if, if the village board could show some leadership on kind of the bigger picture items, that that might be more effective in making the streets safer. And then just kind of following along on that is that, you know, the Wisconsin DOT has got some really great people working there. They're also a really big bureaucracy and they're run by a road builder lobbyist and, you know, they're not always looking so much at safety or what's a nice street for a little village like Shorewood. So I would just like to see whatever happens in my campaign, more advocacy from the village board to, to demand these things from the DOT. So I'll just wrap it up there.
So you'd like us to lobby for different legislation?
Not, not necessarily even legislation, just things that can be done within the existing framework of law. There's been a lot of improvements on the Milwaukee side of Capital Drive. And more legislation would be better. We just heard we're going to get new legislative districts. So there's a lot of hope that we're going to have a better legislature really soon, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Hi, I'm Hannah Seegers. I'm on 4043 North Downer. And I'm also under pedestrian and bike safety committee. I just wanted to comment, I mean, I think the report is good because what it is for, but I also think we should take into consideration that we are a small village. We're not like, like a big, like highway little village where we want like really fast traffic. And I think like when they study like the, the speed limits, I mean, they say they are within like the five miles per hour or within the 10, I mean, from being from 30 miles per hour outside of school until 40 miles per hour almost, that's like a big speed limit, like outside of a school. And I think like we should, it should be a comment somewhere that the WISDOT should take that into consideration. And not just like see it as like, oh, it falls in between the line for any village anywhere. So I just think a little bit more consideration. But otherwise, thank you.
I guess I remember that you, are, are residents allowed to write to DOT?
Yes.
There you go. Okay.
You may be in your better.
Yes, trustee Lynn.
So thank you very much for putting this report together. I appreciate this. I mean, you know, it's, it's good to have as much data as we can and this is, this is always helpful. I understand we're going up against, you know, a pretty, pretty tough adversary here at the, at the DOT and getting them to change this road. You know, and I would just say, you know, a couple of things, I mean, we, we've had success asking DOT for things in the past. We got them to change Lake Drive from four lanes down to two. And we did a study for that as well, listened, they said it was okay, we did it. So, you know, there is hope that we can get some things changed from DOT. They don't, they do know who we are. And then, you know, I would also add, I mean, just any way we can communicate this further. I, I personally just really want the speed limits changed. I understand that people probably don't even know what the actual speed limit is on Capital Drive right now, most people driving on it. But I don't really care. I just think it just should be 25 miles an hour. And, you know, that, that's where I firmly stand on that. I'm looking forward to hearing what else they have to say about some of the other things that we can possibly do. But then I just kind of wrap up my conclusions by just reminding everyone on this issue and all these issues that we deal with. We all share the common enemy, which is cars. That's who we're fighting against really. It's not each other, not the board, not DOT. It's drivers in cars who don't follow the rules and don't pay attention. That's who we're fighting against. So, you know, I appreciate how many people are in this fight and, and I just, I hope we can get something done for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Kudo and then trustee Ursink.
I'm going to find myself in agreement with trustee Lynn. I mean, I just think that speeds on Capital Drive aren't safe. And I don't, you know, having one child crossing there multiple times a day and very soon having two children crossing there multiple times a day. Having grown up on Morris, just Capital Drive, it has always been a problem. It has always been too fast. You know, I am interested in whatever measures we can take that are legally allowable from WISDOT to allow us to slow down traffic on that street. So whether it's a bump out or other traffic calming measures, I am open and interested in it. And I would like us to continue down this track. Just use this as informational, really a jump off point to really do on that street, on that stretch.
Trustee Ursink.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you for, for your time putting together this report. It's, it's, you know, always fascinating to look at the numbers, you know, we experience it day to day, but then you take a step back and you look at the numbers and you can see the bigger picture between real life experience and, and kind of what, what goes into the data here. I just want to kind of defend our board a little bit. We, you know, this board over the time, my time here, I think pedestrian bike safety has been something that we have, you know, taken very seriously. We've, we've acted on a lot of different changes from infrastructure, my time as chair of DPW. I spend a lot, a lot of time talking with Leanne and the rest of this board about what we can do and the changes we can make in the community. And we take a lot of heat for that, you know, like us as a board, like we're making a lot of changes. We take a lot of heat for those changes and then we also take a lot of heat for not making enough changes. So I think you have a really receptive board to, to doing this. None of us want faster speeds in Shorewood. We all want to slow down. We, we, if we could take out cars of Shorewood, I think we all, this board would vote unanimously just to, just to close off all of Shorewood and just make it a bike pedestrian, you know, what? But that's not reality here, you know?
I'm not, I'm not with you on that one.
Well, you've got a fancy, you got a fancy-
I'm not with you on that one.
Anyway, sorry.
Land the plane.
Sorry. I do, you know, I, I live a block north of Capital on Morris. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm around that intersection every day. I live with that intersection. You know, it, it's, it seems like it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen. You've got culvers. You've got a lot of people that disregard the speeds regardless of what it is. You could put 25 miles an hour and people are still going to go 45 miles an hour down that street. So, and then if you take the opportunity to sit with a police officer, which I recommend everybody here do, especially Matt, if you are running for trustee, wrap it up.
Yep.
Yep. I would say that the, the police, you know, spent a lot of time on Capital Drive and you can learn a lot by sitting in a police vehicle with a police officer about, about the streets of Shorewood and Capital Drive.
Thank you. Might I go a step further? So we've gotten a lot of really good comments tonight. Do we know who to forward emails and written comments to if we receive them? Would they go to Strand to go to DOT or to Leanne and then DOT? Okay, so I will invite anyone who either made a comment tonight, if you want to repeat that in writing. Mr. Pendleton, we have those, but you could put an addendum to your thread. Submit them to Director Bushlick or anyone, send it to me. I'll get them on. And we will send them to DOT as well. So you can also write your representatives, state senate, well, currently we don't have a state senator, but point being, it's worth a try.
And could I just ask that if a comment or a recommendation is sent to Leanne or someone else that copies are sent to the trustees as well?
Indeed.
We can make sure that we see what community is asking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, I think, I think you received everything. There was just one from Mr. Pendleton today. And we all received it. All right, trustee Stokian.
Yeah, I would just like to thank all the members of the, the people involved in the bike and pedestrian safety committee who've been tireless in your efforts to work on this. I really appreciate the engineering company doing their job, doing an engineering study, they're paid. But these people are volunteers and they have put in a lot of time on this. I am going to embrace the hope that we get the gray area where this, where the code says may, that the State Department of Transportation says, yes, you may, because it's there. I mean, we, we've seen it in, you know, it can happen as, as trustee Lynn said. So I hope that that happens. And I just think that if there's any way to get, who is the WISDOT? Do we have a contact person that we're using that might be good to direct our comments to? If we'd like to reach out directly to that person, if you could let us know who that would be, is there a case number, a file number? And a little timeline question, how soon do we expect to hear back from them so that we can start to fund changes on Capital Drive yet this construction year? Because that's what my goal is.
We do expect a response within approximately a 60 day window. And I would actually suggest that any comments submitted should be submitted directly to the village so that we can keep record of those for public record purposes. If they're submitted to me or to DPW, I will be sure that-
If they're submitted to me or to DPW, I will be sure then that trustees get copies of all those comments and then that they are forwarded on to our study contract at WISDOT.
I don't think that's enough accountability. I want to know who at WISDOT, I'll CC you everything, but I think we, the residents deserve to know who at WISDOT is our contact person. We have oversight.
I don't know that we've had an actual person assigned to review this study. But I have a department contact, that would be Deb Tarnow, who is our project manager for the Lake Drive project. I don't know that she's the appropriate person to send these comments to. I don't know that she would desire to have these comments sent to her. But I can certainly ask the question as to who that, that appropriate person would be.
Thank you. That'd be great.
All right. Any comments of praise to wrap things up? I think we've heard some sprinkling in here. I, Mr. Pendleton? There you go. Okay, so we're, I'm going to close this, this evening and I'm going to say thank you for the elder services board and the Open Spaces Committee for, not that you had a lot of choice in it, but agreeing to showing up and meeting in this format so that we can all hear what, what each other has to say and not play telephone and get meaning lost along the way. And thank you for being good advocates and we will continue to work together and see this process through and see what we can do. With that, I would ask a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right, motion to adjourn by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Lynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned at 7:46 PM and I would like to move right into the business meeting. And everyone's welcome to stay as usual. All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:46 PM. We have all trustees present with the exception of trustee Maury Baldoff, unless she's not on the thing, is she?
No.
Okay. Who has been excused this evening? Has this noted, uh, meeting been publicly noticed?
Yes, noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time, talent and patience in advance. Moving on to special order of business, we have a presentation of the Historic Preservation Survey and consideration of next steps for Historic Preservation Initiative. We did have a, we do have materials in our meeting packet this evening. So I'm hoping everybody was able to, to look at those ahead of time. And now we'll hand it over to Sam Kaufman.
Thank you, President McKay. Nice to see you all again. I will share the presentation that was in your packet. Okay. So you should be able to see that now. So as for the survey as a whole, we had almost 900 total respondents, which I was quite pleased with. About 60% of those individuals fully completed the survey. And we received an enormous amount of feedback, which was available in the extended survey results that was available to you in your packet. Almost 40% of the complete responses contained at least some form of additional written feedback, which I thought was fantastic. So getting into the questions, these dials on the bottom with these numbers means, so those are the average responses for each question. So for instance, with this question, when choosing to move to and or purchase property in the village, how important was the historic character of the village to you? So the average response on that was a seven out of 10. Do you feel that is important to implement some local rules to help retain the historic and architectural character of Shorewood's historic neighborhoods? The average score on that was a 7.54 out of 10. Similar answer when it comes to the historic commercial areas with a score of 7.52 out of 10. Do you feel the village of Shorewood is currently doing enough when it comes to preserving the village's historic character? The number one answer was not enough, followed by right amount. So it does seem based on those 609 responses that were received by that question that overall folks would like at least something to be done. Now, if you read the materials in your packet, you notice some pretty confusing visual graphs because it doesn't exactly say which item goes with which, which is why I put the table here in the presentation. The lines are filtered by most strongly favored option to least strongly favored option. So the most strongly favored option was provide brochures and educational programming on tax credit programs for home and building renovation for residents and real estate community. About 79% of individuals who responded to that question were either strongly or somewhat in favor of that. Second, most popular answer, update code to delay the demolition of properties with local historic designation. Approximately 78% of individuals said, I, who answered that question, said either somewhat or strongly favor changes to that. Number three, update the village code to require design review of historically designated properties. Somewhat are strongly favor on that question was exactly 75%. Number four, become a certified local government to gain access to historic preservation planning. That received a score of approximately 74%, either somewhat or strongly in favor. Number five, facilitate the designation of both national register and local historic districts. That was favored at least to some degree by about 76% of respondents. Facilitate the designation of national register historic districts was about 67%. And then the other two, facilitate designation of local historic districts and designate design review board as village's historic preservation commission. We're both down in the low 60s in terms of somewhat favor or strongly favor. As for resident feedback about specific actions, and again, you had all the detailed responses available to you in your packet. One of the big concerns was, will there be some sort of financial burden on homeowners or intrusion on private property rights? A lot of folks really wanted some more information on the design review board, what it does, what it, various, you know, improvements to their home need to go through that process. And is it the appropriate body to take on historic preservation? A lot of citizens expressed concerns that that body potentially could be stacked in favor of developers versus general interest in historic preservation. There was quite a bit of interest in terms of how any sort of changes would affect sustainability efforts, like if somebody wanted to install solar panels on their home, geothermal heating system, et cetera. Concerns that implementation of any of the potential actions could raise property values and make the community more affordable. Affordable housing was a big concern that was reflected throughout the survey. There was a lot of interest, again, on more information on what the design review board does and from nearby communities that already have the certified local government status, places like Walutosa, South Milwaukee, Thiemsville, et cetera. And there was general support for zoning code strengthening and enhancement. Some of the other programs that residents suggested in the comments section, certainly a presentation about some of those other CLG communities, like the ones I just mentioned. Lot of interest in park and historic tree preservation. Historical trivia perhaps thrown into the village manager's memo. There was interest in some stronger design guidelines on Oakland Avenue and some of the other commercial areas. Really strong theme of making historic preservation a core component of civic pride with events like, you know, Christmas house tours or ghost events around Halloween, things like that. And education on financial incentive programs potentially tied in with lower interest laws for renovations. Now, when it comes to if the village opts to pursue local historic designation of a residential property, should it require the consent of the owner? As I mentioned, one of the earlier times I was here, in order for villages historic preservation ordinance to comply with state statute as it relates to local historic designation of property, that needs to occur without the consent of the owner of that property. But as you can see here, 63.56% of respondents said that it should require the consent of the owner. Flip slightly as it relates to commercial properties. About 51 and a half percent said that they felt that local historic designation of a commercial property should not require the consent of the owner. And then we just put in there, how did people hear about the survey, just to see how people are getting their communications in the village. Obviously, number one was the village manager's memo, followed by Facebook, Historical Society, a few other sources. So when it comes to additional feedback that was provided at the end of the survey, again, concerns that the design review board may be a little bit too closely tied with the local development community. There was a strong interest in ensuring new development matches historical building facades, using brick, colorations, et cetera, as closely as possible. There was general support for further protections as long as they're not too intrusive on private property rights. And there was an overall consensus of desire for additional information and education about existing programs and on how private property rights could be impacted. So what I would recommend moving forward is really there needs to be a strong emphasis on education in the community before proceeding with any further programs. I think it would be a great step to partner with the Historical Society. One of the things we were talking about in the staff meeting that I had before this was doing a community presentation series on specific topics of interest that are indicated by respondents. For instance, other certified local government communities, what programs already exist, what can homeowners do? How does the design review board work? You know, Bart could present about existing guidelines in terms of design that the village has, et cetera. We were thinking perhaps sort of a, kind of a next school year sort of timeline. Obviously, in the summertime, you're not usually going to get quite as much engagement. As you recall, there was a question at the end of the survey which collected email addresses for those interested in being in touch with further information on local historic preservation efforts. So we will use those. I'll provide those to the village in a spreadsheet and almost finished with that to augment the existing databases of email addresses that village and the Historical Society has and to expand that communication reach. And one of the things that we also thought was, as it relates to some of the specific topics as they're coming up in the lecture series, to consider incorporating some true false polling, you know, beforehand and after into the village manager's memo about some of those topics, just as kind of a learning opportunity for people in the community about some of those specific topics. So that's all for me. I'd be interested in any questions that you might have or if you'd like me to go back to any of the graphs or other slides.
All right, yeah, we certainly can take questions. And then I will just remind the board of what we're being asked for this evening. There are five next steps that we are being asked to consider. And we have a motion of approval of those proposed next steps for action this evening. So clarifying questions, trustee Ursink.
Yeah, the only question that I have is, do you know if people, could you gauge if people took the survey multiple times?
So what I did for most of the survey was I had it switched on so people could only take one response per device that they were using. I toggled it off near the end because there were a few difficulties that people had where they started the survey and they couldn't go back to it. But for most of the survey, it was done, one response per device.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Trustees Stokran.
Regarding the, the motion, I don't see a financial consideration here. So the $8,000 that we paid to university for this, is this the end of that contract or Sam, how much more?
So this is where my role comes to an end. There are other projects that the village has commissioned. I don't know the exact number. I believe one was about communication. There's at least two other, but that's for the whole scope of the program, at least my understanding, the $8,000 that you're paying.
So in these proposed steps, are those steps included in the eight grand, the cost of these eight steps? Sorry, five. So, so we have a motion, but no cost. Is that correct?
The educational series is actually proposed to be outlined by the Historical Society based on our view of the, of the survey results. And then they would discuss that outline with staff and we would assist in areas that we can provide expertise. And as well as with communication and education in the public through our regular communication channels.
Basically, this will be in the 2025 budget. Anything that goes further. I just, right now, considering everybody, everything on everybody's plate, I'm wondering about staff time working on an education piece for historic preservation right now. When I read somewhere else in this, I thought I saw that it'd basically be planning this year in 2024 and money would be spent on the educational piece next year. But I am concerned about staff capacity. Because I might, is that my understanding is correct? There's no more money spent on this this year? Except staff time?
Correct.
Okay, so that's my concern.
Yeah, the, in discussions with the Historical Society and with our staff, the Historical Society would take the lead on those educational efforts. And devising the outline and securing those, you know, presenters as a part of that series. When it would be a village department head presenting, such as, you know, Director Creepentrog, if there's clarification. Because I don't think that the community has a good grasp on what's in our existing code. You know, that's something that they would utilize us for a resource. When it comes to communications, again, we would funnel this through our regular communication channels.
I like your concern. So is, is it the feeling of staff that these steps are manageable and this timeline? And certainly we could change the timeline if something comes up and, and staff can't respond. But has, have these steps been reviewed by staff who would be impacted by them? And are they felt to be manageable with work plans for 2024?
So the recommendation in your packet is the extent of what our staff has reviewed and that seemed, appeared to be manageable. The only point where we'll know more is when that outline from the Historical Society comes back. And if that's a concern of this group, then we can also, and I know that they're on the line, we can also relay that information to them so that they know that we're looking for them to lead on the education component. And then, you know, happy to assist in communicating on all that, all of the timelines associated with that education.
What's the timeline for the Historical Society to come back with something?
In the suggestion you have in there, April, May, that was purposeful from the perspective that this has been an initiative on the village board for the last two or three years. And so this would kind of be like a next phase. So with that, we would review it in conjunction with other work and scope within our existing work plans and see what would be feasible. So that would be coming through our office.
Oh, I thought, I thought you had a question you were fixing, playing with your cloth. So is the next, is the next step, I mean, are you, this is for President McKay. Are you planning on sending this to a committee? Are we going to continue to sort of handle this as committee, not a committee of the whole, but as the board in general? I mean, I'm interested in, I'm very interested in this. I feel like we just handled chickens appropriately. I think I would be interested in having this at the committee level, just to make sure it continues to move forward. But I don't know what the, I don't know what the pleasure of the president is.
Yeah, well, what I see being proposed this evening doesn't require any board or committee action. It is really the Shorewood Historical Society has agreed to draft an outline of educational efforts. And then it would be coordinated within the, it'd be reviewed by village staff. And then in June, we would take it up as a 2025 initiative. So I'm not seeing any board action, but certainly I would never deny you the opportunity to have a role as community and business relations.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm part of the Historical Society. I just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, this has been on, sort of on the agenda for us for a while. And I don't want, I don't want the Historical Society to feel like it's sort of genocidal this to them. And so if there, if there is a proper role for us to play, if there is a opportunity, I mean, it's sort of stresses here.
Yeah, it seems like that. Yeah, it seems like that would be in May 2025, after the educational initiative comes. Because the feeling of the, it seems like the the findings showed that there was interested, there was interest in moving forward in different ways. But we all know that it's fine and good until there's actually a policy. And so it works, it just works out a lot better to have people educated in advance.
I just want to make sure that where it says partner, partnering with them as a partner, as opposed to you go do your thing, report back kind of what you were thinking. Because I just think that as members of the community, as well as trustees, we have a broad understanding of what's going on. And I just want to make sure that we're not showing up too late in the process, not showing up at all, or that our involvement would be welcomed, I guess.
Yeah, could it?
And, you know, Kathy Keen, who is president of the Historical Society, I know is on the call. I'll speak for myself and communication with her. I think the the Historical Society in taking the lead on coming up with an outline of that educational series and how that would look, they're best geared to do it based upon their knowledge set, where they may struggle. They can reach out to us at any time. One of the things that I've stressed to President Keen is that as we move forward, I would prefer for both the Historical Society and the village board that we build kind of a living, breathing educational base on this topic on our village website. Because the topic comes up about every 10 years here, where people, you know, contemplate it, maybe have an ordinance or something of that kind, you know, that sort. But then the the subject dies down and the education has been lost. Or there's not a place for people to go and resource to tune in on what that education is as it interests them. So very similar to how the the CDA educational series went on housing, where we built just the part of the webpage, which was, you know, here's the step. This is the, this is the education on, you know, what it means to have the DRB. What does the DRB currently do? If they were the Historic Preservation Committee, what would that entail? You know, we just want to kind of build that capacity so that as members of the Historical Society change or members of the village board change, that there's a seamless transition so that we're not starting from ground zero.
No, I mean, I agree. I just.
If I may.
I think we're part of that, I think we're a component in that.
Yeah.
As opposed to just the Historical Society.
Correct.
If I, if I might, if I may suggest that perhaps the educational outline draft could come to business and community and business relations for input. I mean, obviously, it's not required for approval there or a recommendation of the board. But then that would serve as a as a thought partner place and a checkpoint. Would that, would you find that agreeable?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, again, and I'll reach out to President Keen. But, you know, I, I think that it's important that we have that sort of continuum of knowledge and it doesn't rest with either entity.
So that's, I think the committee is a is a perfect place to do that. Trustee Stokran.
And so then Sam implied that there's a little more peace yet with university financially. Would someone from university be helping them then with this educational? What will they be doing? What let, what is left?
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
No, what they're doing is they're helping you with other projects that the village is doing.
Oh.
Not related to to this specific project.
Okay, so that's the electrification and the.
Communications.
Okay, well, thank you, Sam. It's been great working with you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thanks for all the work.
And one more thought, you know, maybe if they if they want a new website, Shark Tank.
Right.
Coming up next this week.
There you go.
You know, if they would like to hire.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah. During COVID, yeah. And if you'll recall during COVID, the, that was the first launch of education about historical historic preservation. And that was a collaborative, you know, effort. So I'm imagining something similar. President Keen, would you like to comment on anything that you've heard?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sure, I am, we do thank Sam for spearheading all the work he did. And the Historical Society has had some discussion about what next steps would be. And we want, we would envision consulting people on the side about maybe input as trustee just said that he'd like to stay a member of the society. We would envision looking at what has, what are the questions that are on the list of topics that people put into their surveys and try to come up with a list of how do we tackle informing people about those things? And we, if I understand this right, we would have a list, we would come back with some ideas of, here are some topics for conversation or future programs and possibly some people who could come in and help with those programs. And then the village staff can discuss how they see it fit. And it would be smart for the trustees to see if they sound like they're meeting the needs of what we all want to find out about. So we can make thoughtful programs that are going to work for our village. And that's, but I see that April, May, when I first saw those timelines, I thought, woo, that's pretty quick. But it makes sense to get the ideas generated so that we could plan something that could start in the fall. We could, because if you only have a program every month and a half or something, you you only got one end before the winters come. That's, and I don't know as far as expenses, how much we understand if we run a program, we would, and the society might have some funds to help with that, to help sponsor the program.
If there's any cost.
Right, and yeah, we're not looking, we're not looking at that necessarily at this point. It's just, this is, this is a way for the community to learn more about these issues, which obviously there's a concerted community that cares about learning and looking with the myths, looking at the fall, the fears, as well as the advantages.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm hearing that timeline, at least to get some ideas and then some touch points with staff. You know, input from community and business relations committee, that doing that over the next several months works. And we'll see where we're at. So with that, I would like, I would take a motion.
Move to, actually, no, go ahead.
No, okay.
I move to approve the proposed next steps for the Historic Preservation Initiative.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, moving on. That concludes special order of business for this evening. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Also, yeah.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Yes, trustee Stokran.
I'd like to pull item B as in Barbara and D as in Donna.
All right, any others? All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of 5B and 5D, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to items removed from the consent agenda, 5B, consider village board meeting minutes, February 5th, 2024, trustee Stokran.
Yeah, on item nine, new business nine, D as in Donna. Consider resolution 202404 temporarily halting enforcement of current ordinance. I would just like to insert something to give that more meaning. It would be enforcement of current ordinance to promote the survival of pollinators.
All right, any objections to that? All right, hearing none, would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes of February 5, 2024 with the change.
Also, yeah.
All right, trustee, motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 5D, consider special permit for Chris's slow roll, August 25th, 2024, trustee Stokran.
Yes, last year, there was a request that participants be reminded that when they're in the village, if they're 13 or older, they need to ride in the street, not on the sidewalk. And it was, I think it really made a difference in the neighborhood because in August, there's a lot of people using the sidewalk, especially on Lake Drive, which is where they'll come up. So I would like to move to approve that special event permit with a caveat that someone from the village, please have them, give them that reminder again to their participants.
Thank you. Is that acceptable? All right.
Can I, can I add? It's appropriate for me to add on to that. I just noticed last year that there was a lot of stickers that were left behind on the the route. I'd appreciate it if they could do the, just remove those stickers after, after the the event is over. Many of the stickers kind of stayed for quite a long time.
Were they on the pavement?
Streets pavement, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. All right, can I have a motion? Oh, you did make a motion.
I move to approve the special event permit for Chris's slow roll, August 25, 2024, with notification to the group that the participants 13 and older ride their bicycles in the streets and that the organizers, please, remove stickers.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Ursink, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto public hearings, although we have none this evening. Item eight, citizens to be heard, this matter, this item is for matters not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who would like to be heard this evening? If so, you can raise your hand or come to the microphone. Right, I am not seeing anyone who would like to be heard this evening. Moving on to new business, we have 9A, consider resolution 2024-05 proclaiming World Migratory Bird Day in Shorewood. Is, are there any questions or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Kudo.
I'll move to adopt resolution 2024-05 proclaiming May 11th, 2024 is World Migratory Bird Day in the village of Shorewood.
Second.
Motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustees Stokran.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. And our next order of new business or item for new business is waiver, consider waiver of purchasing policy and agreement for financial services. This item comes to us from village manager Ewald within, as a result of the finance director resigning effective February 16th in 2024. We will need interim assistance and so there are a couple of options laid out. Manager Ewald did what, reached out to the trustees to make sure as this is an unusual situation and and technical in nature, to see if there were any questions ahead of time. So hopefully, everybody has had a chance to prepare on this item. At this time, I would open it for questions. Oh, we also did receive email questions from a trustee that were forwarded to us with responses. And those will be included in the record moving forward. Did everybody get a chance to review those as well? Excellent. So with that, we are being asked to consider interim assistance, which would, let's see. I'm just moving to see what our actual motions are.
They're just different dollar amounts.
Okay. Oh, thank you. All right, so we have several possible motions at different levels. I'd like to open it up for questions, discussion, emotion at this time. Any questions? Trustee Kudo.
I just didn't see, I can't find right now what the recommendation from staff is on, see the possible motion.
We did recommend that we receive assistance in the interim. Based upon the comfort level of the group, there were three options for that system assistance. One would only be interim assistance during the time that a position would be recruited for, either by the village or a recruiter. The, the second would be for interim assistance of LNA, but then also to hire LNA to do the recruitment for the position. They have let us know that they would want to negotiate that with us in terms of how that would work. Because they typically are doing it within their own firm or for their own firm. So that is one piece of information that was unable to be included within your memo. The third option is to hire LNA to provide interim assistance and then also to hire an LNA finance director employee who would function as finance director for the village, but be an employee of LNA.
Is that the same as saying we would be sort of outsourcing a position, our financial services?
Correct.
I mean, I guess at this point, my preference would be, I mean, obviously, we're sort of in a pickle, as it were, and we need to hire somebody who handles in the interim. I'm, I have no problem with LNA not only doing it in the interim, but also having the search. I'm less comfortable with us sort of hiring them on a more permanent basis without doing a search. Man, I don't know what the market is up there. I'm imagining it'll be tough, municipal finance. But I would, I'd sort of like to give it a try and see what we can find. I do have concerns about finding someone that is, that requires additional training or requires additional time with other staff as staff resources, time resources are finite. So I, again, I just sort of want to give it a try, but I am cognizant of the fact that if we hire someone that need to be trained up, that that is actually almost, in my mind, a step backwards from where we are right now. And in that case, I would, I would want to hire them for permanent.
So you're kind of with item number two or three?
C or D? I would say that I am probably pretty closely aligned with trustee Kudo on this. I would lean, you know, depending on their level of work in municipalities, I would lean a little bit towards D, but I would hate to go all in on that right away. It'd be great to work with them for a little while to see sort of, you know, how the village interacts with them, how we, you know, how we like their services. But I think this would take a lot, you know, and if if they came up to sort of our standards and it was a company that we we like to work with, I think D could be a really solid option for for us. And it would take a lot, a lot off of the plate here of staff. So I would probably be in the camp of C, but lean D as well.
Yeah, I'm, Arthur kind of anticipated some of the things I wanted to say. I mean, I, I think, I think I would go with C, just based on the fact, I mean, that going to D would seem like a pretty significant, I think, would involve, I think, needs to involve more conversation about staffing policy and things like that, that we haven't had the opportunity to do. I mean, I do think, given the reality of the market and what we, that 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 might have to be something that we look at seriously down the road. I just don't know that call right now. But at the same time, I don't know if we go to C, are we necessarily handcuffing ourselves in terms of what our future options are? Or if we, you know, take the time to look at what's out there and what's realistic and come back and revisit this, I guess would be kind of where my head is at.
Question? Response to that, I think it's really just a matter of cost. Though hiring them on an hourly basis to perform work will be higher just for interim assistance as it, it would be less if it were interim assistance and then going to hire. So as you'll note in the cost table, item C, you'll see that the, and this is the estimate for year-end actual for that item would be, you know, right now, we're budgeted about $115,000. Moving with that option with about a five-month timeline would be an estimate of $100,000. Moving with that option with about a five month timeline would be an estimate of 184,000. So in the immediate 2024 fiscal year, it's, it's a big jump that we would absorb. So the reason I laid out the, the cost like that is because it's, I want to be on the same page in terms of what's palatable to the group. If we did just want to go, and I'll let the, the rest of the room also provide their input. But if you were, if you continue to be focused on just interim assistance, then the next question I'll have that we need to conclude tonight is whether the village does a recruitment or we hire someone to do the recruitment. And whether an RFP is required and that if RFP is going to require more time. So I just want to have those next steps outlined with all of you. And then also a check in in terms of when, when do we pivot? Based upon whatever timeline we choose, because I don't, I want to be prepared. I want to be prepared to see how we, we go with some other, the projects.
So a quick clarifying question, how long did it take for the, how long did the last search take?
We did two recruitments, so we were out there for at least, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But we were out there for over three weeks just with advertisement out there for the position. We didn't have what we believed to be a successful recruitment and we went out for another three weeks. In addition.
It's just you and Chris doing it?
Correct. And then also we had reached out to, at that point recruiters to see if there was any employment opportunities that they had as well.
So more than two months, less than, what, four months?
How about four months then or?
Well, yeah, because Mark gave notice in November and George's first day was March 6th.
Correct. I thought it was March 1st, Kathy, that was really good.
Not from memories for me.
Trustee Ursink?
Yeah, I just, I'm curious on this firm's experience with municipal financing.
I just do want to call your attention that we do have a member of the firm in the audience tonight, which is Christina Domer, who would be someone who we would actually be working with. So if you want to ask her, you're welcome to. I will also relay that I asked them for a list of references of communities. Right now they have not proceeded with this model in, in terms of hiring a full LNA employee to fill a director position, but they have done it multiple times in Illinois. Last year, the city of Glendale attempted to recruit for a finance director position and again did, went through two recruitments and was unsuccessful. They although had a CPA on their staff already. So they ended up internally promoting someone, but then hiring LNA, that individual being Christina, to assist in training their CPA internally and then also some of their accounting staff, getting them up to date with all the accounting materials that needed to be done that was not done within the interim. From the clients that I spoke to and other municipalities within Illinois, I heard nothing but glowing recommendations. Many of the managers had worked not only with LNA in their current municipality outsourcing, but in, in prior municipalities. So also varying sizes and many, as opposed to the other service areas that we have, finance is one of the few that can be scheduled and doesn't necessarily always need to be done on site physically, because you can communicate with people at any point in time. So they have a deeper bench in which to accomplish some of the, the skill sets that we need. Being in a smaller municipality, there are tasks that the finance director does that necessarily don't require a finance director skill set, but an accounting skill, a skill set. Then there are other tasks such as, you know, financial planning with the long range plan, working on debt issuance, doing some of those things that are more larger picture that you want that skill set of the director. Both are necessary, both are required. And there was nothing but, but positive things to say about how this model has been used in Illinois. So reticent in my mind has been one of trustee Kudo's comments of hiring someone without the experience to do this is taking a step back. I feel like in order for me to be able to do my best job for you with the projects that we have on the table, I need someone with the skill set to be able to come in and help. If we decide to wait on that, to try to find that for two months, that's okay. What's really most important to me as we go through this process is managing the expectations so that when we go into a scenario, you know that I'm going to communicate with you frequently and so that we can always be on the same page in terms of what step we need to take next to accomplish where we need to do, need to be in order to, to operate most effectively.
Assuming we go with, with this company in the interim, I assume that the transition from that to a more, to a more permanent situation, you know, let's say we go through one round of recruitment, it doesn't work out and, you know, the prospects don't look fantastic going into a second round. I assume that the transition from part-time contractual hourly to full-time would be fairly seamless, right? Like is, it's not something we would have to take another month and a half or another two months. Ideally, some of the same individuals we're dealing with and we would just go into it. Is that fair?
Pay more.
Right, but I'm just saying it's not, as opposed to sort of they onboard someone new, we start all the way over. So it's, it's much more of a seamless process for Rebecca and staff. If we end up going that way as opposed to reinventing the wheel with someone new and all.
So my understanding of that, to answer that question is number one, some people would stay the same. For example, Christina would continue with us working on our account in the role of finance director until such time that LNA went to recruit for that position to be in-house with us. So there would be, if for some reason we went through a recruitment for two months and said, hey, this isn't working, then, and then if we decided to go with option D, then that would trigger a new contract with LNA. And LNA at that point would go and recruit for a position to fill the finance director position.
But it would be their employee.
Correct.
And there'd be a continuation of service.
There would be a continuation of service from Christina and my understanding, Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but also from an accounting perspective of an individual who would be assisting us with routine monthly reconciliations and duties up until that point. And she's coming up, so she can correct me if I'm incorrect.
Hello, and thank you for your time. There's nothing to correct.
You just want to speak a little bit, a little bit more.
Okay, I got to get in there, okay? No problem. Yeah, there's nothing to correct, but I do want to point out we are currently trying to work this person into a contract that would be with a local municipality about 30 minutes away from here. So that's why this would work, because we'd be able to get someone with either experience or at the level at which we would need them to be so that they can split their time between you and another municipality and be local here in the Milwaukee area. I'm in the Green Bay area and while I travel two to three hours across the state for all of my work, that's not the best, right? You want someone here as soon as possible, so that's why we presented that approach. So while it's more expensive to get the interim help, you'll actually get better help faster if you go with D.
So trustee Stokbrand?
So my question then, I noticed here I have two. So let's say we do this C or D, depending if the person is hired for the local job. And so we're not having a full-time finance director. And let's say you're in Glendale Monday and Tuesday and I know that and I've got a question on Monday. Do I just say, oh, I know Christina, I'm sorry, is that, I know she's working in Glendale today and I, it's not fair Glendale for me to call and ask my question, so I'm going to call her Wednesday afternoon Friday with my question. Is that, how does that work with communities?
I completely understand your concern. I break up my day based on what's coming my way and I prioritize that list based on what should be worked on first. So if your question is very important, you're doing a debt issuance, that's got to happen right now. It doesn't matter which day or where I'm at, I'm dropping everything, I'm taking care of that. So it's, it's priority based on what's most important to the communities that I'm servicing at the time.
You could say, oh, I can get back to you on Thursday about that, right?
Yes, I'm very responsive and I think some of the feedback she may have gotten was from, you know, local communities that have worked with me as well and they could speak to that happening. I'm not always in the area, but Glendale gets responses from me the same day.
And I guess my other question was, this sounds, this really sounds great that there's another possible, because we had heard about leadership openings, we were talking about our vacation package and that there were leadership openings in municipalities in the area. And so when you say sharing someone for this, this sounds really, really good. But you know, the lowest level we go to here for D is 80% FTE. And so as appealing as this sounds to me to split a job with someone, we'd be going even lower, right? We'd be going 50.
Sorry, if I may, that includes that person that we'd be hiring, but that does not include my time and the firm's time and some of that other support that you're going to get, that's included in that full-time equivalent.
Okay.
But I'm not included in that full-time equivalent, if you will.
Okay. So this other municipality that's looking for a finance director, how fleshed out is this? How, how close, and with this, then would this person work for that other community and us? Or would they be your employee?
They would be our employees so that we can manage and make sure you get the best service and so does the other community. If they're your employee, that becomes really difficult then for two communities to split an employee. So what we have found worked in Illinois is we employ the person and some of these communities like Glendale, it's a larger community, they have like 10 people there. So they're all LNA employees, they get the training, they get the resources from the firm, so it's benefited them.
Finance department is LNA?
Yes. Completely employees that work for the firm. So the model works because these professionals get support that they otherwise would not, working for one municipality. But being split, they get a little more excitement in their work and they kind of get that work balance that they're seeking, especially if they're at a CPA level or, you know, experienced like myself.
And what can you tell us about the, because I think we're in a position where we, we really need someone with a high skill set at this point. That we can't really, other than helping people become acclimated to the village, they have to be able to hit the ground running.
Absolutely. So I would be part of selecting the individual and they would work directly under me to make sure we're effectively providing the services at the same level of quality I would want to provide the services. So I would be looking for someone right at my level or just a step down. So we're looking at, you know, middle management. A good example would be like a senior level, almost a manager at a public accounting firm. If we could find someone right at that level, that would be what we're seeking. And that person would then get split across two communities, whereas that salary might not be palatable for one community to pay on their own.
Trustee Ursink, and I, I do have something to say, but I'll.
You know, I mean, I think after listening to Rebecca and I'm so sorry, Christie, Chrissy? Christina, Christina. I have to say that I'm probably, you know, just looking in the future and just, just trying to potentially just ripping the bandaid off. I'd, I'd be more in favor of, of option D at this point. You know, we, we'd be saving money with this option and I, I just, I feel like, you know, we're going to go through these steps and, you know, we may come up with the same, same options we had the last round. And I think just going in this direction and starting it now is probably going to be way more effective sort of in the short and long term and also save us money. So that's, I'd probably be more in higher, more in favor of option D.
Arndorfer?
Yeah, I agree. And I mean, I just, from a, you know, near and midterm perspective, I mean, I think obviously, you know, an employer like this is going to offer people different career paths and et cetera that, you know, potentially be seen as more appealing employer for a wider range of people than one we may be able to draw here on our own. So I think that's just another consideration in terms of, you know, growth potential for folks. We're hiring, which I think potentially could bring us, you know, more continuity or help ensure that.
If I may, do you mind? So I have been a little closer to this issue, given my role and I, so I feel more comfortable because I've been processing information along with Rebecca and also observing and then also knowing Glendale and what they've gone through and how this does mirror what's happening in the industry. It's very clear to me that a firm like LNA can offer employees more than we can offer from a skill set of being a finance person. Because it, we have, I guess what I've really learned in the past year is that we basically have like city level finance responsibilities without the city level resources to hire a department. We don't have an assistant finance director, you know, we have, we have two positions, but they're not close. And so when you think about doing TIF, when you think about doing utilities, like all these things that we do as, as a densely populated small village, those really are city level functions and it's, we're not going to attract somebody with that kind of skill set because we don't have the, we don't have the, the salary and we also don't have the support once they get here. So I have learned that. I also, I know that Rebecca would not have come to us with this option D if it weren't legit and it, it weren't vetted and, and with confidence that it would work. It does take the, while it's very different from a service model than we've had in the past, it removes any, I guess, risk for us in the next six months in terms of a failed recruitment. Wasted, you know, we're all concerned about staff time, wasted time on a failed recruitment. I like the idea of seeing what's out there, but also just, I just wanted to share with my peers that from what I've observed and what I've learned over the past year is that I can't, there's not a high enough indication that we would get a return on that effort and we would certainly spend more money and that's for sure. So I just, if it makes a difference, I just wanted to share that from my perspective. Trustee Lynn?
Just try to make it quick here, but I, I kind of came into this thinking that I would not be in favor of, of option D of hiring outside, just given the village's history of kind of doing things on our own inside this building. But I can, kind of, this discussion has kind of helped flipped my perspective a little bit. And I think another thing to consider with, if we do go with option D is there is another layer of financial responsibility with that because if an outside person is looking at our finances, that's, that's another division of labor and kind of protecting us from somebody doing the wrong thing, you know, which is always possible, but I just think that's part of my calculus as well and, and now at this point leaning towards option D.
Trustee Kudo?
So as we look at, you know, budgeting coming, budgeting ahead, the participation in meetings at night, you know, I mean, these are, these are intensive things, right? So what kind of staff or in-person staff support exists in a D scenario where we hire, we hire the firm?
Where they can be present at meetings?
Present at meetings, present, you know, during finance committee meetings when we're going through the budgeting process and you know, there's a lot of back and forth, so I'm sure it works. I'm just interested to see how it works.
So you'll get a team with LNA rather than just one person. Right now for Glendale, it has just been predominantly myself because the firm is foraying into Wisconsin with me as kind of the lead on that. But because we are building out this team, it will be a team. So if I'm not available, someone else will be, et cetera. Beyond just our client accounting and advisory services, we have 50 auditors that all know municipal accounting because of the audits they do. So if none of us are available, then you get one of them to come to your meeting and relay back information. So it might not always be the same person, but if you request me and I can make it happen, I will make it happen. And, you know, I will support you and continue to do that. You'll be the first outsourced model in Wisconsin, so.
We're special, we know.
You'll, you'll be so special.
Yeah.
And that's very exciting for me, but also I think for this community and area as a whole, because if this works, maybe it can work in other communities. And maybe this becomes the solution for finance departments across our nation that are struggling in the municipal environment.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like it's, thank you very much. It sounds like it's very similar to the council that we have set up. Whether it's Nathan or someone else. And so, you know, with that, you know, I think I'm now leaning a little bit closer to D, just because we, we just need to solve this and move on because there are other problems that we have to solve as well.
Trustee Stokan.
So in option D as in Donna, you could start on February 20th, which is Monday. And the cost then?
Tomorrow.
I'm sorry, tomorrow.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Thank you. Close to Friday. We'd be looking at, like, could we, could we opt for the low one, the 80%? 11,250 a month for the remainder of 2024? Is that our flat fee for this? I mean, I'd like to protect us with a not to exceed or something. You know, I see all your rates here for the hourly rate for the accountant and the, that's where I get kind of nervous when there's no my misunderstanding.
Yes, a little bit. And interim help, there would not be a cap, which is why it could become really expensive. That would be hourly. We're giving you ideas of how many hours we expect to be spending for the monthly fees, but those are capped. So.
So, correct. In the draft agreement that was provided to you, that 80% would be capped monthly at 11,250. And then.
And that's for the whole team? That's not just for the?
Correct. And then that would, that flat fee amount would continue for the remainder of 2024. And 20, and the, the agreement has a 3% increase built in annually. It would be a three-year agreement with provision for two-year renewal, which is consistent for pretty much everything we do with our contracts.
So 3% increase for 2025 and another 3% increase on that for 2026?
Correct.
And then it would be calendar year?
Yes, yes. The effective date would be tomorrow.
It was shorter year this year, obviously.
Correct, but that those terms would be in, in effect.
And cash flow wise, I mean, you know, otherwise we'd be paying, you know, a salary. So I'm assuming that the math has been done and we're all.
So the, that's why I kind of broke it down. So our, the, the baseline we have to go off of is 115,000. We had someone in this position who was at the bottom of the range. So when looking at some of these estimates and looking at what now rates are for people who are experienced, I would estimate that you'd probably, if you were just going to hire someone, you'd have to add 20,000 to that, just to get them towards the other end of that range, if you brought someone in with experience, which we all, that higher level of skill set, which we all want. Correct. So in the, the column of the estimated 24-year-end actual, which would be, this is my estimate, of course, of what that would be if we went with option D. So right now we have budgeted about 115,000. This would be around 145,000. That also takes in the median, so that's not based off of the 11,250, but it's based off of 12,350 because I took the median between 13,000 and 11,250 for purposes of the analysis. Again, because I, in putting together these numbers, I had to make some level of assumption because there's a lot of moving parts. So when I say estimate, I mean estimate, because I didn't know what option you would want to pivot from or choose from, but you would come in at the end of the year at around 145. If you went with the 11,250, you'd be a little bit lower. And for rounding purposes, you know, I used the fact that we've paid two, I estimated two months of, you know, the Director Johnson salary, not knowing where we're going to end up at the end of this meeting because you're splitting hairs by the time.
And so essentially, like, this is your job interview, right? Because you'll, you'll be our person. And how does it work out if it doesn't work out? Like, let's say, like, this person is hired that you're thinking of and that person moves into this job that we share with another municipality. What if something doesn't work out?
It'll be a contract negotiation on our end with you. The employee is ours, so we can redeploy them wherever.
Okay.
Yeah. So if it becomes like an employee issue, personalities or whatnot, I don't think we'd end up there because we will involve you in the process of recruiting and all of that in the interviews. But if something goes wrong, I'm still here to help and you still get the firm.
Can you tell us which municipality?
The other one is, it's Peewaqui.
So Trustee Ursink has his hand up.
Yep, thank you. I just need, could you give me a little bit more context on the versions? Like if we are leaning towards the option D, we've got version 2.1, 2.2, 2.3. Can you give me a little context so we can, you know, I can better sort of analyze which direction is best to go here?
So version 2.1 would include a full-time FTE. 2.2 would be 85%. And the reason why we looked at some different variations of that is because I acknowledge I have not done this before with contracting out a position like this. And so was not, I'm not fully aware of how much it may take to accomplish some of those accounting tasks versus, versus director tasks. I also wanted to give you some options because there's, if you're anything like me, I'm always looking at the numbers and it's, there's a lot involved here, right? So I can appreciate from your perspective, recognizing that we're going to be over, like, that's, I would want to know what the lowest amount could be from LNA that they would be willing to push in that position. Because they are also in a position where they have high motivation to have this be successful. But they also don't want to go below something that they don't believe that they can deliver the quality on, that they have the experience of giving and providing to their clients, because those are the clients who I talk to, right? I mean, there are other municipalities in, in Illinois who have, who have done this model. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I, I just want, you know, I think if these are all acceptable avenues for LNA, you know, I think this is a big step for us. And I, I just want to know if it's, version 2.3 is an appropriate version that we can go down. You know, it's, it's sort of a lower price point, but it, it could also be a good sort of trial price point as well.
Well, I look at it as like, I mean, you're, no matter, we will get a high level of service based on everything that's prevented.
Hundred percent.
But if we want to stay on track for, depending on what we choose, we will have to adjust our expectations around how much can be done on our schedule versus, do you see what I'm saying? So.
Could you explain?
If we only, if we only pay for 80% of a full-time person and we still want to be on schedule with every operation that we do within finance.
Yep.
That's not a match.
Right.
So if we want, if we want to be done and catching up and full feet ahead, then invest the money and ensure that we have a full-time person.
Okay, right.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
I just said one. Yeah, I mean, I, I, that's kind of where my head was at, just with DPW on that. I think it's,
We've got a lot.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather, you know, be a little bit off than be behind. And I'm sorry, what's the, what's, what's the term of the contract again?
The term would be for three years.
Three years.
With an option to renew for an additional two years. And that's typically how we structure thing that, because that's how our purchasing policy is written. So I stay in line with that.
So if we were, let's say we were, well, so if we went with hypothetically, option D 2.1, would we have, I mean, and, you know, we'd start, started at 2.1, realized maybe we didn't need, would we have the opportunity to renegotiate or to open it up? Or would we be locked in at that for the duration?
We will always renegotiate if you're unhappy in your contract. We want you to be happy in your contract.
So ditto if we started at 2.3 and we thought this isn't enough.
Yes, absolutely. We would renegotiate and work with you to figure out where you would be happy.
I know you.
I'm chomping at the bit. Chomping at the bit to motion.
Go ahead and make the motion.
Would like to hear.
It'll come to me.
Okay. I moved to hire LNA to provide interim services and hire LNA finance director employee. I moved to approve an agreement with Louderbach and Amen. LLP in the amount of $13,000 per month for interim assistants and future LNA employee to fill the role of finance director. Second.
All right, discussion, I remembered. I'm going to call on myself. This will be financed from reserves with the remainder?
Through the operational budget. So once we close quarter four and then have a look at quarter one, we'll need to evaluate how to absorb the expenditure. I just can't get there because we haven't closed.
Got it. So it may come from reserves or it may come from?
It would come from the operational budget.
Operating reserves or no? We would.
I, I would try to reconcile it within this year and then we would recognize that next year we would have to budget more in this department category for purposes of this.
Okay. So any further discussion? I want to say thank you. I did see Barbara Kylie Mailer's hand up, but it's been taken down. So I hope we've answered all your questions. I really appreciate the discussion tonight. I appreciate Rebecca for doing all this, really walking us through this. It is a big change. No other board has made a decision like this. And I think it's a testament to this board's ability to really take everyone's, you know, really the needs of the organization, but also the needs of the community into consideration. And I also want to thank Christina for coming here tonight because it was really helpful to have you on, on hand to ask questions. So, and I'm excited to support this. So with that, I would ask for, oh, yes?
I would just like to say, I'm only going to vote no because I'd like to start with a less, a lower FTE. Because when I was talking with Rebecca and she mentioned how many times the finance director was doing things that we didn't really need a finance director to do. But he was there, so he did it. I think that with, the thing that they offer is a division of labor. So the more expensive person is going to be a higher responsibility, higher liability tasks. And it gives us a chance to put a lesser paid person doing things that you don't need that level for. And so for that reason, I would like to see us go with a different version, 2.2 or 2.3.
Point of clarification, my understanding is that tasks would be accomplished by, you know, this, this fee encompasses maybe more than one person. If, if it's a finance director task, then the finance director salary is paid. If it's an accounting task, then we're paying an accounting level person to do that.
Yes, and actually the higher you go in the contract fee, the more of my time is in there. And that's why. So.
Okay.
You get a higher level person with more time of it, with the higher cost. Yeah.
Okay, yes, trustee Kudo.
And again, the reason I went with 13, frankly, continuity, I mean, I just, I want to make this easy. I want to make sure that we have full-time coverage. Should we decide somewhere down the road that we need to pull back? I mean, we're not talking about thousands of thousands of dollars per month. I mean, so I would rather start with 100% in it covered so we can move on other things and then come budget time, if we need to, if we feel the need to renegotiate or something like that, we can, obviously. But that's why I started at 13.
Appreciate it. Trustee Arndt Roper.
Yeah, just one thank you again for coming down. Appreciate you taking the questions and I thought it was a good discussion. I mean, as I said upfront, it was a little bit apprehensive, might be too strong a word, but, you know, it's, it's a big step, but I think it's, it's one, I think we all pretty much understand where we're going and yeah, I, I like 13, just in part because of the amount of coverage that we get from that onsite coverage, which I think will certainly be important as we transition. And I, I understand the other point of view on that as well.
All right, thank you. Okay, all those in favors, this is not a roll call vote, correct?
Correct.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five, one. All right, thank you, everyone. That concludes new business.
Check drive home.
Thank you.
Yeah, our doors open at eight.
Moving on to reports of village officials, I wanted to encourage everyone to attend the Shorewood School District Black History Celebration at the auditorium on the 21st, seven to nine. It'll be led by the students. Tended the ICC meeting last week in Cudahy. And that link to the materials is there. Attended the North Shore Fire Department Board Meeting. That link to the materials is there as well. There is an annual data report that I found very interesting. Especially, we had a little discussion or more explanation of mutual aid. And how that actually works out when it looks like Milwaukee at, calls for more, makes more calls for mutual aid, but when it comes down to it, we get more units from them because every time we ask them for mutual aid, they send like three or four units, whereas we just send one. So that was just a very interesting discussion. So I encourage you, you know, can look that up. And I think that's all that I have at this point. 10B village trustees, any, I believe we have maybe a library board update, maybe open spaces.
I'm the manager. So I was leaving.
All right.
That was my kind way of.
Reminding, reminding me.
Well, no, we'll also giving you the paperwork and so they could see the schedule.
Oh, as you can see, from the paperwork provided with the schedule, we are a little bit behind on what was our original schedule, but it's still moving to, moving forward quite nicely. The committee's been established. Patrick Lanane's been wonderful to work with as a committee member, as well as having him work with the library staff. Has had this process up, so I feel very comfortable about that. The library is hiring new staff members at sort of a breakneck speed, so they have, I want to say three that just came on board in the last week or two. And so Haley's doing a wonderful job over there. So I, you know, it's, we had a long road to go, but I feel like we're, we're making some real progress.
Appreciate it. Trustee Stokan.
I'm not taking questions. I'm just kidding.
Just try, just try. So is the application period closed for the director job? And can you tell us how many applicants?
I believe so. Believe it is.
My understanding is that it closed on Friday.
May I ask how many applicants we got?
Assistant village manager is on the line.
We did leave the, the announcement right now. It's first review of applications is on the 16th, so we had that soft deadline, but it is open until filled. So we had that soft deadline, but it is open until filled. So that's how we, we posted it in every place where it's currently live. Since I've not gotten the application materials to the ad hoc selection committee quite yet, I'd feel more comfortable providing that update to them first.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
So thank you. I, I believe it'll probably be posted somewhere as well or communicated to us.
But it would be fair to say that we've had applicants.
Yeah.
Yes, couldn't get my mic in time.
There we go.
All right, other updates, committee?
This is a belated update. I wanted to thank the bid for the Christmas lights again this year. I meant to do it last year. That's how late I am. This is their second year, I believe. I think it's a wonderful, you know, replacement for the tired snowflakes. And they look like illuminated tree trunks, don't they? And we love our trees in Shorewood, right? And I also wanted to thank the donor for the scoop the poop bags, Shorewood Animal Hospital. In the interest of all disclosure, we take our dog there, but I'm getting no benefit from this announcement.
Hey, good to know. All right.
Jim. Just like, thanks staff for all the work they're doing on tomorrow's election and just encourage people to get out to vote. That was mine, so great.
All right, Village Manager.
Wanted to remind everybody of a collaborative effort that's taking place with the village, the library, and the school district and Shorewood moving forward. We collaborated on bringing Milwaukee Habitat for Humanity Housing Race and Equity Workshop to our community next Tuesday, February 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's going to be in the lower level of the library. I recognize that this does conflict for a period of time with the plan commission meeting, so my apologies in advance. I hear that it may be a shorter meeting. So while you're here, you could move right over to, to, to attend that workshop.
Or we could start over there and come here because we meet at 6:30.
Or that. There are a plethora of options. So that was the, the one day that we could find to, to work for all parties in the school district too. So wanted to update you on that, library director recruitment, and that concludes my report.
I just do one last one, sorry.
Sure.
Lake Bluff Ice Captains. Want to say thank you. It was not the longest-
Cue the tears.
Yeah, not the longest season ever, kind of a bummer. Thank you, global warming. But big thanks to the captains for setting it all up, taking care of it, keeping in communication with everybody in the community who would have liked to have used it had there been more time. But looking forward to winter perhaps next year and, and the ice rink being back.
Great. Future items for consideration. Trustee Stock, I mean, Earthink.
Not sure how to phrase it as a future item consideration, but I know that, just kind of want to think in advance for the RNC that's going to be coming up and what role the village of Shorewood is going to play in that, if anything, you know.
Or how we might be impacted.
Police, you know, our infrastructure with our police department, that sort of thing. So I'd love to get sort of an update or have that conversation at some point down the road. That's going to be, I think Shorewood's going to feel a pretty big impact in that.
Two, two brief comments. North Shore Health Department, running full speed in terms of preparedness. Really grateful for seeing the level of emergency management that they're bringing to the North Shore, which is just a breath of fresh air. And the police end, Milwaukee is the leader of, of how that deployment occurs. I think I'm fair. City.
City.
I think it's fair to say that from our perspective, while they intend to deploy, they're behind.
Yeah.
So we look forward to hearing from them in the near future. So based upon how that, which that for us is going to be the biggest moving target, really that impacts our staffing levels because there's a request from other departments to provide officers or how that deployment looks, that's when I'm going to time that update. So I'll be in communication with Chief Worth. It's one of the things that she touches on weekly.
I would assume Airbnb's too in the community. That's going to be something that we're all going to, you know, we're going to have to deal with.
Get through.
Get through.
We don't have any.
Get through.
Yeah.
Get through.
That reminds me that our next Fire Department Board Meeting is going to be held at Glendale so that we can tour the new firehouse 82, which is coming to an end to its, you know, construction in the latter stages, which is great news. So that's on March 12th at 8:00 AM over there, if anybody's interested. I'm sure the chief, well, no, it's not open. You can't tour it unless you come to the meeting. So I saw hands. Everybody just wants to keep talking, okay?
I forgot to say, I wanted to thank Chris Anderson for his work on the scoop the poop donation. And the other thing I wanted, an item for a future consideration was, this has come up a few times with the school board election. There has been talk about the neighborhood loan program. And I think, I think this is before Bart was here. So it started in 2009. It was ended in 2018 to be reevaluated. And with all the talk about housing and affordable housing and school enrollment, I feel a need to know what happened to that program. Was it success? Was it a partial success? Was it a flip, was it a failure? Which is, it's the last time that we did housing in the village. And I just feel like we can't really look forward until we know what happened.
So I think-
And so I'm wondering, like, a white paper, you know?
Let's actually, it's all there, just pulled together.
I can, I mean, I could talk about it now, but I'm not, I know I'm not-
That's why, I mean, would this be a good place for like, just a, just a three-page paper? Would it be good to have a Community and Business Relations Committee meeting about it?
I don't think it's going to take that long.
Okay.
But I'm happy to provide a paragraph.
And, and obviously, what happened to the money? They're still paying it back.
COVID. Well, it was real, any funds that were there for that program were reallocated to the grant program that was authorized by the CDA and the board during COVID.
So it's all gone?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's why I said it was a little quick.
Wasn't that the facade, though, improvement?
Both.
Both, yeah. Got it, it was the whole.
All the grant programs were stopped. Yeah, well, good. All right.
I moved to adjourn. Second.
Any objections? We stand adjourned at 9:11. Thanks, everyone.